January thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Time is six thirty-five. And this is a meeting of thanks for planning commission and training.
Work session.
Work session.
Training.
Brandon, call call please.
Boers.
Yeah.
Owen.
Here.
Nixon. Wilson.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Sellers.
Here.
What?
Here.
We can probably turn the camera off until I finish.
Audio.
Audio. Would you prefer that? Do you all have preference?
Well, I do get some right in the middle. And Amy's next to me soon. She brought me.
Okay, we'll just turn the camera on. And I'm gonna turn it on later again. Actually, you can pull up this and then and that can be, can you do that?
Uh, I don't wanna do it, but we can do it in post.
Okay. Okay, great. First item on the agenda. I don't even remember what the agenda says.
It's training.
Uh, it's a sentence in this.
Okay. The problem of the planning commissions. Twenty twenty-four city of James planning commission training. And most of this information was taken from Oklahoma Municipal League or OML. And I want to thank everyone for coming. And I know it was kind of last minute. And that means a lot to me that you all were able to, um, able and willing to decide your personal time to attend this evening. So. We'll also say that our city attorney was going to be here this evening. And in my mind, that was gonna be the legal thing, but she's been here a lot of times. So she, she does not available this evening. The first page, so what we have is a PowerPoint. And the first page is called worthings of planning commission. So the idea of planning commission originated in the standard planning and zoning enabling acts developed under Robert Hoover in the nineteen twenties. So we remember, um, back when the nineteen twenties were happening, they did a lot of works in progress. So that's what it's called, WPA. The WPA project, so they had a, um, had a lot of infrastructure going on. That's how it kept the momentum of elimination, put people to work, building public projects, et cetera. And they apparently also established the planning and zoning enabling acts. This model ordinance, these model ordinances were drafted to standardize land use planning procedures across the US. And I will say, if you look at, um, in about nineteen seventy-two, I believe is when Oklahoma State statute probably uh, kind of put everything into place. And for years and decades, all the municipalities in this, probably across the state, but definitely in this area, I haven't looked at all of them across the state, basically had the same zoning code. And then Tulsa started up maybe theirs, Broken Arrow, and one by one, they've all written their own codes. But, um, in Oklahoma, I would say it was nineteen seventy-two was the first time.
Did they write their own code in order to track business or and have it easier?
I think when it was all first adopted, it made sense for to just kind of copy and paste and everybody do the same thing because nobody knew really what was or how to implement it. But as cities grew, they, they recognized that this doesn't really work for us. And this is not really as important to us. Some people in some communities, there are things that are very, very important signage, like you're, it's live or die by signage. And you only want, um, certain types of signs, certain kinds of signs. And then in other communities, um, there might be a different element that's more important. And so they started going into their code and just personalizing it to their community. The city of James took a PUD approach. And everything that developed really for the last twenty, twenty-five years, when people actually started moving to Jinx, was done through a planning and development. And our code previously before we adopted the UDO was really, um, really with the encouragement of every project being planned and developed.
But it's also similar to?
No, really.
There are no beginnings, no?
No, um, they definitely had the PUD process, but they used it more as, um, as it was kind of intended to be where you, the PUD is, maybe you can't meet all the local area standards, or maybe there's some part of the code that you can't meet, so you need some special exceptions to that. Whereas Jinx deliberately did everything as a PUD. It's not right or wrong, it's just different. One city's preference over another. Almost all states adopted the standardized acts which authorized cities, towns, and counties to establish planning commissions and dot zoning and subdivision regulations. When we adopted the UDO, it became subdivision, um, the subdivision regulations became part of our unified development ordinance. So that's also new and different. Whereas in a lot of communities, they still have it separate. Since these acts defined and established essential duties of planning commissioners, boards of zoning appeals, and the court adjustment and legislative bodies. So we have the Board of Adjustment and the Planning Commission, which are both under the, the Planning Department. And then I also oversee the technical advisory committee. So anytime something has to have, uh, to, has to be given, your public utility companies, public and private utility companies need our information. So we have a very formal process for giving them that information. Okay. So where do the powers originate? And they originate through our municipal code, which is adopted by council and could also, um, be appointed by county commissioners. So the planning commissioners can be appointed or are appointed by your council. So the powers are city code says you can have planning commissioners. And we are a statutory city. So we are regulated by state statute. And that's why when we updated the UDO, we had a draft version and then we had to go in and make sure that every single portion was um, in line with state statute. So if state statute said you needed a fifteen day notice, then we put in we needed a fifteen day notice. We can give a greater notice, but we can't do less than fifteen. Whereas before it might have said twenty or something else, but we went exactly by, um, state statute. And then you're appointed by council, you all have all been through that process. You're appointed to a term of three years. And you, three of you are even years and, or three or four are even years and three or four of you are odd years. And then you're reappointed for, um, someone else will be assigned to your seat. So we've done that on the Board of Adjustment. We made a lot of changes a few years ago during COVID. And, um, so I've never been a part of anyone being removed from the planning commission in any of the cities I've worked for. Case law on planning commissions. Do we need a planning commission? The answer is yes. Can city council act as the planning commission? And the answer is no. I mean, municipality must have a healthy zoning commission and Board of Adjustment in order to exercise its zoning authority, but can not do so in their absence. So you cannot have, um, you cannot have development in zoning cases and rezonings and all of those things without an established planning commission. And we have to have a quorum for our meetings, which you all know, quorum is four. So on planning commission, quorum is four. So in order to have a meeting, we have to have four members of the planning commission. We don't have to have a chair or the vice chair. Although it's really not a good idea, you know, but that's okay, the next, someone can lead it. And out of the four present, in order for something to pass favorably, you have to have majority. So if you only have four, then you have to have three people, um, to get a favorable, favorable vote. When we updated the unified development ordinance, we made it so that everything moves forward to council. It just moves forward with approval of planning commission, denial of planning commission, or approval of commissions, which was different also. Previously, if something was not recommended for approval by planning commissions, the applicant had to appeal to council. But, um, I've never been in a city before they did not appeal. So I was like, you know what? This is where you start catering it to your own community. They're, they always feel, just send it to, to council, tell them what, or don't recommend approval and keep going. The duties and powers of the planning commission and employees. So this comes from state statute forty-five dash one oh three. So this is, uh, is it chapter eleven, is that what it's called?
Title eleven.
Title eleven. So title eleven in our state statute is where you'll find out most of land use and different things. It's fascinating, just kidding. Uh, it's very, that's a bold. So it basically says a lot of things like, um, okay, for instance, prepare plans for the betterment of the municipality as a place of residence or for business. The duties and powers would also be consider and investigate any subject matter pertaining to the development and betterment of the municipality and make recommendations to any department of the municipal government and for any purpose make or cause to be made surveys, maps, or plans. The powers and duties also include employing engineers, attorneys, clerks, and the secretary, and any other help deemed necessary subject to the approval of the municipal governing body. In addition, the necessary expenses incurred by the commission shall be appropriated and paid out of the municipal treasury as other legal expenses of the municipality, but in no event may the planning commission be authorized to create deficiencies. So that being said, um, I'll go back to your positions. You are, the planning commission is a volunteer group. And if you don't obey Board of Adjustment, it's a volunteer group, they do not get paid. And so I was talking to someone recently and it might have been Scott, but it might not have been. So the way this state statute is written, you all would be doing all the work as volunteers with no pay. But you can hire people to do work. And so what has happened over time, and I think that's, that's why the public often comes and they feel like it, you're, you're just rubber stamping everything, you just do what staff tells you. So if we did what state statute said, you all would be having the meetings, deciding if this is a good idea or a bad idea, move your entrance twenty feet north or twenty feet south, the subdivision regulations say you have to do this. You all would be making all those decisions. But what happened over time is that municipality, and it doesn't even mention planners because I don't think planning was really a thing when all this started. And so, um, what happened was I, the planning, I can't remember what word. Basically municipalities hire someone to do all of that on behalf of the planning commission. We write the staff report, we make a recommendation to the planning commission, and then the planning commission makes a recommendation to council. And that is, in Oklahoma, I don't know of any community that does it differently. There, there might be, but I'm not aware of. So what state statute wrote and how that gets implemented feels to me dramatically different. And I think that that's a lot of the reason why the public gets frustrated because it feels like I'm just bringing you something to be rubber stamped. But in fact, I did all the things that were required by state statute. I already looked, what does the plat require? All of these things. What does our subdivision rule say? All of these things. What does the comprehensive plan say? All of these things. So I already put all that information together, synthesized it, and then made a recommendation. And so in my mind, it never is a rubber stamp because all the boxes have been checked. If there were, if there are boxes that are not checked, then I, I'll make sure that you know them. I also do not generally bring anything, I can't think of anything that I ever just outright. I don't, I never remember a time and I could, maybe there was and I just don't remember it. I don't ever remember a time when I just massively did not feel something should be brought. Because you can ask for it and I don't have any problem telling people that. I do it all the time. So again, it feels like, oh, you just, maybe you rubber stamped everything, but the reality is I've already told, these people know over and over and over. And, you know, and they're not moving their projects forward. So by the time I say yes, they've, they've met everything that I'm aware of. That doesn't mean that there's information that I don't know. There's been plenty of times when, um, information comes forward from the public or from the planning commission that I, I just don't know because I don't live here. Or maybe the public knows because they've lived there their whole lives. I can distinctly remember a case in another community where the neighbors had a drainage issue. And there was a big, uh, drainage ditch and, um, I'm just gonna say drainage way. Uh, and we did not realize that, that there was actually a lot of water that came through there. Because from the hydrology that you see and from what should have happened, it shouldn't have gone through that area. So that was really great information. It was translated and given to the city engineer who followed up with it. And it actually impacted the project. They still weren't able to do it, but they had to, to work within a different reality of what we, we thought was the reality.
Is there a level of transparency from the citizen standpoint that they can see what, you know, that you've already sent there to all these things? Like, I think maybe if there was a way for them to see that not everything just comes through. There's a bunch of things you've already sent there to, to that point. I don't know how that would work, but I'm just saying.
Until it's actually how.
Have we published it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, how, so until someone actually makes an application, um, and you can talk, uh, Brandon Macy is the city clerk and he goes to conferences all over the world.
Two states.
France.
Okay, sorry, in, in multiple things.
Like in Japan or something.
They're all vacation.
So you're saying that's before they've made a formal application, they're, they're kind of talking through things.
Yeah. So until it's a formal application, it's really not public information.
Okay.
So when, how many applications are submitted that actually make it to us?
I'd say ninety-nine percent because I don't.
Because you've stuck to before.
I just.
Yeah.
How many?
They should actually.
Exactly. Don't waste your time because it's not gonna get through.
I'm generally, if I really am opposed, I just don't see any way to move forward. I will tell them you can make application, but I will not make a recommendation of approval. And at that point, they know that they're not.
Yeah.
If I bring you something and it says, sell, want, recommend approval.
Yeah.
You're probably not having it.
Yeah.
So like, yeah, so like, how many, and I'm sure you probably don't know, but like,
how many things get brought to you? Well, I wonder, I wonder what the percentage of stuff that gets brought to you actually who makes it to an application?
Um, not that many. Honestly, there's a gentleman that we talked to last week that we've been talking to for three years. Very common for three, we've met with him three or four times in three years. Same lot, same conversation, always a different, you know, he's got a better, a new idea, a better idea, a different idea. And it's always slightly different, but three years, one lot in downtown. I mean, it's just very common. We have, um, there's some property that was recently annexed south of town, but we've had meeting after meeting after meeting with people who've had ideas about what they thought would go great there. So there's a lot of conversations. We've had people, um, prior to one hundred and sixth and Elm area, there were a really nice group of young men who had this big vision for baseball. And they looked at some land and we talked to them and, um, then they talked to another city, really talked to. So it's, we have conversations all the time that do not ever move forward. And literally year and years, we talked about the same property. Sometimes it's the same owner, same property. Mr. Crowe, I've probably talked to him before he came in for, with an application, I think we had two meetings maybe with him over the last two years. Uh, the property at Ninety-first and, um, you'll start barking, I mean, time to say, oh, so well, stop. I'm, I'm hearing myself.
What is that point?
Ninety-first and, oh, uh, Thirty-third maybe. Uh, that property before it sold, we probably had four or five different conversations. Sometimes it's the broker who sends someone to us, sometimes it's the owner who comes in. Sometimes it's the owner and a potential buyer. Just over and over and over, we have conversations. And so I think that I can't stay on top of my work as it is, but to try and make every conversation public would, uh, do a disservice to, to the, um, system. It's not possible. And even, and I say often.
Some people, you people know.
Oh, yeah, some of it is confidential. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, um, um, another thing, just because a project gets approved does not mean it will get built.
I was gonna say, I would, I'll bet, I would bet over half of the applications that, that approved through the planning commission, approved through council would never happen. I bet a half.
I bet it is very high.
Yeah.
So, and, and there's a million reasons for that too. So, you know, a lot of times we worry and fret and haggle over something and in reality, it never gets built. See, I've seen that. There was a, a really popular piece of land in another community. We talked about it for probably over two years. Developers came back, different developer group, different developer group, and then they submitted, like, they spent money. They're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars doing the general idea, concept. And, um, finally got it approved. Can't build it. Absolutely cannot solve the sewer problem. It's not, and it's a problem for them, but they can solve it. It's just financially, you cannot do it with the size of the property. So I, that's why, I guess a lot of times I don't really get too worked up about it, it doesn't matter. They still have months and sometimes years that have to work where they can actually get something up out of the ground.
Which is exactly one of the reasons why we put in some sort of laws for all of us.
So when we adopted the UDO, there was a counselor at the time who was very adamant that we look at language that would protect the cities that, so that if something got approved and did not get built, then ten years later, because the way planning and develop, planning developments are written, many times it'll say all of these uses are allowed, right? So you're presenting a, a single family residential, but all of these things are allowed. And if you come back to me and you say, I can't do single family residential, but I want to do this over here. So I'm gonna look at that PUD and I'm gonna like, yep, this was before the UDO. Say, yep, you can do that. And I'm gonna let you move forward. I'm gonna give you a building permit, I'm gonna approve your site plan if you meet all the other criteria. And it may or may not be what was originally approved. And the argument was, well, we spent, you know, hours and we were expecting a hospital with a heliport. And now they want to do single family. Well, single family was allowed. Or the hospital was allowed or whatever. So the way it's written now, if they don't build what was approved within five years, then it's void. The underlying zoning does not change, but the PUD goes away. That also has pros and cons. Because, um, it just might. So you have to think about all of that. That's the tricky part are all those nuances. But I usually point, and that's why my staff reports have the chart in them so that you know when something's getting approved, any of these things unless they strike it could happen in the future. Now, the, also the way that the UDO is written, and the UDO is the Unified Development Ordinance, it also says if your site plan changes by X percent or you move, change the parking, so there's other criteria, then it requires a major amendment. So that's also protective for the city. We did not have those protections before. So it's a little more protective than, well, it's actually a lot more protective than it was previously. So public improvements and plaits, so this is the next page of land. Before final action may be taken by any municipality or department thereof on any question, it shall be submitted to the planning commission for investigation and report. So I get the investigation and report and you read the investigation and the report and decide if I, what I said was true. And, um, that, that is your job to make sure that if I give you a report, that it is accurate and true. So, um, these are the different things that are, should be looked at and considered. So on public improvements of plaits and land continued, all plaits, plans, plaits, replats of land laid out in lots or blocks in the streets, alleys, and other portions in the same intended to be dedicated to the public or private use within the corporate limits of the municipality shall first be submitted to the municipal planning commission for approval or rejection. So actually bringing you anything from those boxes. And state statute forty-five dash one oh four, this is the continuation. The planning commission may exercise jurisdiction over subdivision of land and adopt regulations governing the subdivision of land within its jurisdiction. A big thing that we changed when we adopted the UDO, we have lot splits and then we have minor subdivisions. And minor subdivisions are a big change from before. So last month, the Alabam came through. And, um, it was a plat amendment, but the way that our code is written, it's a minor subdivision. And it was not required council approval, it might require your approval. So it won't go on to council. If it was a preliminary plat, the state statute requires it goes to, to planning commission density council and then fine by the planning commission density council. Plats are, plaits, lot splits, minor subdivisions, and those subdivision regulations go on consent here at the city of Jinx. That's something that, um, we implemented in another community. You met, uh, Mr. Cloyde, who's the city engineer. He was a planning commissioner in that same community where I was the city planner. And, um, he felt, had, he was the chair and he had recommended that we put plaits and things on consent. And I just think it makes sense because I literally have a list from state statute that says has to have an order there, it has to have the owner's name, has to have, there's all of these things. And if it has all of that, it should be approved. There's no reason that it should not be approved. So at least I can't think of it. If I ever do, then I will put it, it won't be on consent and I have a conversation about it. So consent items on our agenda are considered, um, what is the word, Brandon? Something business, regular business. It says something more than that. But it's basically saying this is just.
Ordinary.
Ordinary business. There's nothing special about it. It's a checklist and it's met everything. When I bring a plat to you, the city engineer has looked at it. Staff has reviewed it probably two or three times. We've had, talked about it in development meetings. And Mr. Carr, the assistant city manager, we look at them, we pull them up in a conference room just like this on the board and we zoom in, I point out any areas or concerns that I have. And city engineer does the same thing. Mr. Rush, um, also does the same thing because he's boots on the ground. So he might be like, well, actually, there's a big, you know, whatever right there that is gonna have to be moved or has been there forever and whatever. So he brings a lot of that knowledge that I wouldn't necessarily get because just driving by a site, which is getting out and walking the site, it's something that didn't work. I wish I got out and walked more, I seem to be glued to my desk. Okay. Um, you don't have any questions about public improvements? Ray, do you find any of this much changed from before? Because the video was dramatically changed from what the code said previously.
Not from my recollection.
Okay, great. Okay. So key roads, making recommendations to city council on community development issues, zoning ordinances, and zoning map amendments. Preliminary and final subdivision plaits, special permits, land use, plans, um, et cetera. So in this case, they, they say special permits. We don't have special permits. We do have specific use permits, but again, this is from OML. Some cities do have special permits. Putting public hearings to gain public information and advice from professional staff, systems groups, property owners, and development applicants on planning issues. Developing and updating the community comprehensive plan. So we did this, I was not part of that process. That process was done in two thousand, started in two thousand eighteen and, uh, finished up in two thousand nineteen. And I think we adopted it at the end of nineteen or twenty twenty, it was actually twenty twenty.
The comprehensive plan? Yeah, that was the right one. You pushed it along.
Yes, I came, oh, I came in twenty twenty, not, not.
Right before.
I would say COVID because COVID nineteen is very crazy. Um, I got here in twenty twenty and basically the comprehensive plan was already done. I just came in at the tail end. We were sitting down, um, with other staff, reading through it, literally saying, they missed a comma, I think that's how far it was done. So I wasn't part of any of the public engagement. I can't ever really speak to it from my own experience. But I believe the House of Republicans did a really great job on the comprehensive plan. But I believe the House of the Levine did a really great job on the comprehensive plan and the public input. And got a lot of feedback. So, uh, other key roles are providing opportunity for long-term in-depth study of major issues and a forum for consensus building. So, one of the, the long-term projects that'll be coming up will be the downtown master plan. I have the R F Q mostly written for several weeks now. For a very long time, I've had it mostly written. But, um,
What's that?
A request for qualifications, in this case, it's qualifications. And so, we could do, um, on these types of projects, you can do an R F P, which is a request for proposals, or an R F Q, request for qualifications. So, I opted for an R F Q, so that, um, we would just sit down and talk. Whoever's on that committee would sit down and talk with the consultants and find out what their experience is, kind of doing more of an interview style, because it is very laborious and expensive for them to put together an R F P. They have to do a lot of research and spend a lot of money. And only one person wins. So, that will be our upcoming long-term project. And that will, I think there'll be a lot of need for consensus building on that. It's not, it is about the Main Street, but it's, it's about all of Jinx, right? Because Main Street is the heart of Jinx. It's the heartbeat of Jinx. And if it's not thriving, then, um, then our heart is not healthy, right? So, we want it to thrive. And the mayor mentioned the strategic plan. And one of the things that came out of the comprehensive plan, people wanted improvements on Main Street, and the citizens wanted improvements along the river. So, having a downtown master plan would provide that, um, resolution to the comprehensive plan. But also, in the strategic plan from council, they followed up on that and said, "We, we agree that the Main Street is a priority for our citizens and a priority for council." So, we'll get that going.
How do you get educated on, on the strategic plan and concept?
One of my goals was to start having comprehensive plan, um, meetings, so to speak. But if you ever just want to sit down with me and kind of just kind of hammer out, there, in the very back of the comprehensive plan, and I can get you, did I give you a copy of it already? I think I gave you one, did I give you one? I'll get you one.
Uh, I'm not sure.
Okay, well
It may be in that information you gave me initially.
Well, that information.
Two weeks ago.
Okay, I'll get you copies.
I have more data, I just want to be able to see what, yeah, make sure that we've already gone through the time and effort and money to
Yes.
build that plan. And we start trying to deviate from that, how do we stay on task with that plan?
Right.
Or do another one, one of the other.
So, in the comprehensive plan, there's a list at the very back that kind of gives you all of the takeaways. And that's something that I had to my mind, would put together a little committee to be like, "Where are we at in, in this process? How many of these objectives have we accomplished? And what, what do we really need to work on?" But, um, the other, the strategic plan, the council is having another strategic plan meeting soon. And they'll go through kind of the same thing, like, okay, where are we at in, in our goals and, and all of that. So, I think they talked about the comprehensive plan in a little bit, so I'll wait to provide additional information at that time. Um, but I'll get you a copy of it. And anytime, any of you want to sit down and, and talk through the comp plan or the code or anything like that, I will leave time for you. I'll make myself available. And I definitely want you to hear it, understand it. On this page, still facilitating an opportunity to promote intergovernmental cooperation with school districts, utilities, and neighboring jurisdictions, office holders, and civic leaders. So, one of the ways that we do that is through the school system and, you know, these utility companies, they get notification on all of our projects through the staff meetings. I don't have a virtual, I don't, we send ours out via email, and I only hold a meeting if it's requested by the, the technical advisory committee, because they all are very busy as well, and nine times out of ten, they don't show up. And so, rather than scheduling meetings every month, they know that I'm gonna send them an email, I'm gonna give them a link to everything, or a PDF of everything, and then they'll call me if they have questions. And they, they generally do, or they'll email me if they have questions. Um, neighboring jurisdictions and office holders. Anytime there's a zoning case and, and a neighboring jurisdiction, if it's in about three hundred square meters, they will get a notice. I get notices of other cities' projects. The civic leaders, you all in general, I think, um, you know, you're, you all have a counselor in the district that you live in, and then you serve for all the counselors, on behalf of all the counselors. So, if you ever have questions, your counselors would be available to you if you're calling them as a citizen. And then otherwise, if you have questions as a planning commissioner, I'm happy to send those questions to them if you don't want to send them directly. Or if you want to copy me, that way I know what you're asking, and I can make sure, I can answer them. So, we're making recommendations. So, we discussed that state statute really laid it out, that you all were gonna do all the investigating, all the researching, writing reports and everything. But in reality, that's not what happens. You do all of that, but you do it, um, you all, I know for a fact, go into the sites very often. You talk to different people, you do your own research, and then you take the staff reports. I try to get you the general information when I receive it. And then, again, about two weeks later, and then ideally, you would have your, your full packet the Friday before your planning commission meeting on Thursday. So, several days in advance. The last two months, I have failed you, sorry. Oh, really working on that. So, when you are making a recommendation, very important to ask relevant questions. Or, and I would say even before you're making a recommendation, when you're getting that initial planning update that says, hey, do the upcoming projects, if you have a second to look at and look for locations or whatever, and just see if you have any questions at that time. Uh, consider all sides of an issue without political pressure from constituents. The beautiful thing about planning commission is that you are unbiased, and you are not elected officials. And when you make a decision, it is very important that you make it without bias and without pressure from any constituents. And that's sometimes challenging, because I know you all get calls, and I know you live in neighborhoods, and you have businesses, and you hear from the public. And it makes it very, very challenging. But at the end of the day, the recommendation should be based on the evidence presented. Uh, consider balance with the comprehensive plan. So, the comprehensive plan is a guide, and it is not codified. The zoning code, which is the U D O, and the subdivision regulations are law. They have to be, I have to enforce the law. The comprehensive plan is a guide, and it can be a little fluid. So, to illustrate that, the month directly after adopting the comprehensive plan, a two-year process, we amended the map.
Yeah.
The exact next month.
The next meeting.
It was. It was the next meeting, we came in and amended the map. It's a guide.
If it's a thing, I'm sorry.
Do I? No.
If it, this has always been a caveat in my head. If it's just a guide, why do we have to amend it and go forward?
Some communities don't. But we actually have language in ours that says we do too. But that was because I required it. Some commu, some communities write it, they consider it a guide, they read it. Yeah, we're, we're close. We feel like we need the spirit of the comprehensive plan. And they move things forward. I'm a little more rigid than that. I like my comp plan to match up with the, the other things. And so, I asked for language to be put in. That was probably one of the only things that I did to the comp plan that wasn't on there. And it talks about what is a major amendment, what is a minor amendment. And we do those, uh, major amendments are supposed to be done quarterly. I'm not so rigid that we, you can do it anytime, January, February, or March. I don't, I don't care. Like, some communities say they can only do it in January, April, you know, whatever. I don't do that, but there's a lot of, so, basically, what normally gets amended in the comprehensive plan is the actual land use map. So, we projected, we, as in the House of the Levine, did all of their research, and they looked at the demographics, and they looked at the school system, and they looked at the, the markets, and they looked at all these things, and they said, "Housing, housing, housing, commercial, retail, dah 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 dah." And they made a map of it. And this is what currently exists, and this is, so if you were here, it was a very, it was a lot, it was a lot of information. They did a great job. So, the map is the first thing, when someone comes in and says, "Hey, I want to do this," the first thing I look at, or Brandon, because Brandon takes a lot of calls, the first thing that happens is we look at the map. "Well, you want to do residential, and the map says residential." Great, you can do it. At least you can do that part. So, then we talk about what's the next thing. If the map is not consistent with the request, then we talk about, can we amend the map? So, if, if we're looking at amending the map, what is around it? Okay, so I want to know if, is it, if it's residential, is it adjacent to an industrial park, or an industrial zoning, or apartments, or retail, or whatever? We're gonna look at it at that time. But, um, and then we can make a decision. And so, we have like up on K place, there's industrial, there's single-family residential, there's apartments, there's all kinds of stuff. And that was another one that we made pretty early on, because we had said, if this redevelops, it should be, I don't remember what it was, apartments. But it was already industrial, and the guy just wanted to put another building. I don't know if y'all remember that case. Um, it was like K and
Yeah, I don't like K place.
Mm-hmm. So, we amended the comp plan to let them expand, because the comp plan said, if anything changes. But in that area, it could have been apartments on the comp plan. It could have been industrial, or it could have been any of these other things, because all of those existed in a, in a crazy little hodgepodge in that area. So, to me, it wasn't a big deal to, to change it. So, that's, um, that's, that's the importance of it. So, the, that kind of keeps me on track. I go with the plan. If we want to amend it, we can, but we have a process set up. And that keeps it from being arbitrary, right?
Right.
I really, really, really like Brandon, and he's so nice, and he comes in, and he always brings me, um, food, and he really wants to get this project done, and he's been trying, and he's so nice. I'm, by golly, it's not really gonna hurt anybody. I'm gonna recommend approval to the planning commission. I have a set of rules, I got a lot of rules. I don't care how nice you are.
The reason I bring that up is, I don't have a specific example, but it seems like there are times when there's a planning commissioner who can get hamstrung on the compromise, and then come back and go, "Well, that doesn't fit the comp plan." And then we have to do a comp plan amendment, or not do our compromise.
Right.
There's not, there's not any wiggle room in there, for good reasons, that you just explained.
So, that it doesn't become arbitrary.
Yep.
So, the comprehensive plan is very important for, um, keeping everybody on track. But that's why it's also good to have your applicants present when you're having conversations.
Yes.
Because you can, you could ask someone, "Would you be willing to do a comp plan amendment?" And maybe they would say yes, maybe they would say no. You could probably ask that, but
Okay, I'll just carry these things.
Mm-hmm. Does that help? Um, annexations, we have an unwritten policy that if anyone wants to build in Jinx and their property is unannexed, we want them to annex, because we do want them to build to city standards. Um, you all provide a venue for impartial public hearing. And the framework, our, our U D O and our comprehensive plan provide the framework for the, um, request. So, in taking action, you can request comprehensive plan updates, and you can request new studies such as traffic analysis, housing studies, updated zoning categories, and updated use categories. So, we just did last, um, what, what month is this, January? In October, we updated our use chart from when we originally adopted it. And we have a couple more, um, changes coming through all probably next month. How long does a traffic study typically take?
How much does it cost?
Um, probably over ten thousand would be like, so, when we had the, over by the bridge, the traffic study done there, I'd say it was probably over ten thousand dollars for that very, very small traffic study. And then, if you have a very large in-depth traffic study, it just depends how, how big your property is, how many lanes are already there, how big you're wanting to build. It would just depend on the actual project. So, I'd say tens of thousands generally. And I'm probably, they could get a small study done probably in three to six weeks. But a comprehensive study would take, um, probably a couple months. How long is a, how long is a traffic study good for? Yeah, I don't know. I think it depends on the project. So, if you did a traffic study, um, and you have no new neighborhood, or no, generally no significant
Change.
Right. So, they, so, the schools and the engineers look at the comprehensive plan as well. So, if our comprehensive plan says we have, um, X percent of dedicated to single-family residential, the schools look at that, and they use that in their planning. And if you look, if a traffic engineer comes in and does a study, they also look at the comprehensive plan. That's why we, in my opinion, why it's important to keep it up to date, because they can say, "Well, this is two hundred acres of vacant land, but the comp plan says it's gonna be medium intensity single-family." So, that means sometime between now and the next ten, fifteen years, it's possible there'll be two hundred homes here. So, then they, they use that information. Or this is a five-acre tract dedicated to commercial, so they'll factor that into their traffic study. So, there doesn't have to be something there for them. They can look at the comprehensive plan and use that information for future projections. Okay. The committee, the planning commission is a recommending body. The city council is a legislative body, and the planning commission and city council are separate bodies, and each is vital to a smoothly functioning community. I think you all are familiar with that. It says, uh, planned unit development. What are they? And it's a building, it's a type of building development. So, I think there, the word probably would be better, uh, development, just development. A type of development and also regulatory process. So, um, you all already know, you're very familiar with planning unit developments. We updated it during the U D O process that says, if you're gonna do a P U D, you need to provide us with some perks, because this is a give and take. And generally speaking, now, anything over twenty acres residential related has to have a P U D, but we try to get everything straight zoning if possible. So, that is the goal. I put, um, on this next page, it had P U Ds in appropriate conditions. So, these are things that could get, as you know, sometimes lot sizes and setbacks are a really big deal with P U Ds. Sometimes building heights or other requirements, landscaping. These are things that are appropriate conditions that you all can say, well, we don't, you know, we we hear what you're saying, might be any more about river. We hear what you're saying, might be more landscaping. And then I was gonna go into our code and add more, but I did not.
Because silence comes under this or not? Is it standalone?
No, it can, it's part of the code, so it can come under there. Um, appropriate conditions also include cluster housing, residential, non-residential, community, uh, unit land. We don't have a community, we get a process. If you'll notice, it does not list, um, so you all is very, very fortunate that most of your developers are more than happy to tell you what their price point is and what their materials are. It is, um, not required in state statute, and most communities will not even have those conversations. So, you're very fortunate that your developers provide that to you on their own, so without you all having to ask for it. You can ask for it, they, you can't make them give you that information. You can ask for it, they, you can't make them give you that information. A comprehensive plan is a long-range planning tool that's intended to be used as a guide for the growth and physical development of the community for ten to twenty years. Any element of the plan can be amended or changed if a petitioner demonstrates to city council they have a better idea and that's what we're kind of talking about. Sometimes you just don't know. We all thought it was going to be resident, or in the case of the very first comprehensive plan amendment, it was an industrial park and, um, and they said we want to do single family residential. It seemed like a good idea because the neighbors did not want an industrial park beside them even though they bought their homes after the, um, the industrial park existed long before they bought and built their homes. But for suddenly it became, for some reason, it suddenly became an issue. And so the city said, well, we don't want industrial, so how about single family detached apartment? Because that's basically what they ended up doing.
Part of that problem is that, is Mike Wallace overbuilt his neighborhood. Once approved to go in there, it was smaller homes, starter homes. And then the, um, market conditions changed before he built that out. And he built that really nice gated neighborhood with five and six hundred thousand dollar homes next to the industrial park.
It became a real problem. So that was the city solving a problem.
And then I know for a fact several realtors said, oh, that's a park, that's, that's city owned, that's a park next door. That's always going to be a park, uh, an industrial book park.
Be careful, the whole different color on the map, it's not green. Think that one is great. So, um, a comprehensive plan is a dynamic planning, planning document that responds to changing needs and conditions. A comprehensive plan is not easily organized. That's why I said it's not the law. It can be amended, we can change it, um, and, but the, the code is, it is the law. So how is the comprehensive plan used? It's a guide for daily decision making. It's the first thing I look at before I don't have a conversation. It helps me to identify steps necessary to achieve the vision of the city. So that's where that downtown master plan is part of that, dedicating dollars to the, to the river and to Main Street. Very important that it is a comprehensive plan because that's what the public said, they wanted dollars instead of dedicated to. Amending the subdivision regs and zoning ordinance is based on the comprehensive plan's recommendations. So that's how we got the new UDO and the RTC zoning and the downtown core zoning was all came by that comprehensive plan. Purpose of regulations. municipal regulations as to building structures and land shall be made in accordance with the comprehensive plan and designed to accomplish any of the following objectives. So everything that we do is to be done in accordance with the comprehensive plan. So lessen congestion in streets, secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers, promote health and general welfare, including the peace and quality of life of the district, prevent the overcrowding of land, promote historical preservation, avoid undue concentration of population, facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public requirements. So I think, um, uh, the public often shares these fundamental truths with me. And I think that sometimes what I think is overcrowding or congestion on a street probably differs dramatically than what, what maybe you think is crowding or overpopulation or congestion in a street. And so these are the goals and the objectives, but interpretation of those, everybody here has their own opinion, right? And so it does, it doesn't always equal the same. So we have to keep that in mind when we have hearings that my interpretation of congestion versus Craig's interpretation of congestion may not be the same. And I had a professor at college who's constantly getting called about some issue with traffic and with school and blah, 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 and he would go and he would investigate. And his response was always the same, well, it looks like you have the perfect traffic coming. Because the traffic's bumper to bumper and nobody's getting hit by a car because you can't. So everybody's cutting along at a very safe speed and all is well. He never saw it as a problem. I was like, what? So that was my early introduction to planning, right? A whole different, you have, you have to think about what is your interpretation versus mine.
Speed bumps to slow down, he's for traffic, so it's.
Right. So the next section is specific use permits. I was told the City of James' former city attorney and, um, planner wrote state statute for specific use permits. So that's pretty cool. They did not exist before that. So specific use permits are the types of uses for which a specific use may be required shall be those types of uses which because of the size of the land they require or the specialized nature of the use may more intensely dominate the area in which they are located and their effects on the general public are broader in scope than other permitted uses in the district. So I think places of assembly come under a specific use permit in every, so the district, no, they're not anywhere by right. I could be wrong on that, if they are in our role it is. But a place of assembly generally requires a lot of parking, they have odd hours. So they have to do a specific use permit. And there are several other things that are. The same exact process for our planning and development. Then we updated the UDO. The language now states that if you, if the code says you need a specific use permit and you get into the project and realize that you cannot meet the requirements of the code, you have to do a PUD. So it's still coming to the planning commission, it's still getting that twenty day notice, it's still a sign and a letter. And the planning commission is still going to have the hearing, but we're going to do a PUD, not a specific use permit. That's the way it is currently written. Um, next page, open meeting act, and this is in state statute, uh, twenty-five. And I will actually let Brandon talk about that. He's had way more education on open meetings act than I ever have.
Okay, tell me you were going to do this before the meetings. No, uh, it's, I mean, it's pretty straightforward and she's not wrong. Uh, the open meeting act is very, more or less straightforward in a field of commerce, although in trying to deal with stuff like this where you just need training or, or trying just to constitute what a lot of people consider just normal business or trying to even figure out, talking through an item which, you know, three of you got on three way calls are talking about an item because you want to talk it out with someone that can be, that everybody certainly wants to be in that competition because you have no business outside of an open setting or the record of it. So you just need to be careful, think about, think about, essentially. Anything else?
Yep.
I know there was some discussion about if three or four city councilors or three or four of us were having an online conversation via social media, does that constitute?
Yes.
No, we're even.
So that would be the, uh, whatever, uh, be an open meeting act violation. From my understanding, there's, not too long ago, Tulsa got into a lawsuit related to some of the counselors texting each other directly. Um, from my understanding, I had already called what they were texting about. I was about to add it, but it wasn't like, we should require them to do X, Y, Z even though past since it was more so, more something plaguing about, we're, we're.
I'm just surprised we stopped talking.
Pretty much something like that, you know? And it, no, it was on those lines. It wasn't, you know, trying to make that feel. They were competent with meeting act violation on that. The Tulsa school board, I have no idea where this is going. But one of the school board members has filed an open meeting act lawsuit against the school board because they, she claims that they were talking about something weren't supposed to talk about in open or executive session, which planning commission, as far as I, as long as I'm going to go, they're not in executive session. I don't think they're legally able to. I don't think there are any statutes that allow them to do that. But if they are, or, I don't know, they were, she was, kind of, there was an open meeting violation because they were talking about something that wasn't on the agenda to get into executive session for. But it seems like she wasn't the one talking about it. It's, it's a weird lawsuit. Um, I don't know where it's, I don't know if it dropped or what, but it. So the open meetings act can, in, cause lawsuits, especially if something's super tumultuous.
The example, the example I saw here locally was where one of our counselors made some sort of just general statement and tired several people.
Yes, it's the same as emails. You don't want to, if you email each other, if we're trying to schedule something, you need to PCC each other because if you just reply or CC everyone or kind of, to feel, that's an open meetings act violation because you're communicating with more than a quorum.
Yeah.
And that's.
Okay.
Like that. Um, there are penalties, civil penalties, I think. Do I have a personal, to the liable, starting to think of that word, for open meetings act violations. If you have any other questions that further go open meetings over records, you can bring them in email.
But we, we can have separate conversations. We just can't have a court together to have that conversation, correct?
I would hesitate to talk too much business because I don't know fully, but I want to say if you're ending up, say you're talking to Gina and you go, okay, let me talk to Craig, and then talk to Craig and say what Gina said, you're trying to, essentially trying to skirt the open meetings act.
I agree with, I agree, I agree with you, just one on one.
Yeah.
But not, not what he said or what she said or what.
You can't have a court of majority.
Yeah, you definitely can't talk courtly together in court, definitely not.
You got the, like the Oklahoma tax commissioners, three tax commissioners. They are all in three separate corners on the same floor. They can't talk to each other until meeting time because.
Called census.
Because two of them together makes court.
Yeah.
Uh, it does go into it in your packet. It says, a meeting occurs when conducting, when conducting business of a public body by a majority of members. So we talked earlier, that's four. So four plan, planning commissioners are in a text, in an email. I sweat even to send you out a calendar request because you can't do it, you can't blind copy in a calendar request. And I always get really anxious about that.
I had a meeting with Teresa for another issue recently, recently related to a different open meetings stuff. She essentially said when you're trying to schedule something, you should be fine with open meetings act probably, as long as it's, you know, purely trying to schedule.
So tonight would have just been a gathering like it was initially. It wouldn't have been a call for early, then get a log gathered, as long as we didn't talk, that's just what we've been.
Right. If we had been at training, it would have been a, it would have been noticed.
Yeah, and there's separates, event notice that you have to do if, like for splash that's coming up, you know, probably going to be more than four counselors there. You just have to put out that no business or anything is going to be discussed, no action, yeah, yeah, yeah. Just saying. Maybe you have it before people, uh, maybe at the same general location.
What if the chamber banquet, you, they all go and you just can't discuss? So, um.
What, what about approving body? Can you have discussions with approving body, approving body?
Well, I think it says, no, you're not really supposed to, but let me see if it says specifically.
I mean, not that I'm looking to go talk to a group of counselors, but.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, especially, you know, if there is an item that takes literally.
Then they're going to get, hey, you're going to get this next month and.
Yeah, I mean, that, that should be a, hey, what, or, hey, hear my thoughts on it? Or the care of the planning makers thought, I don't know if, yes, we're doing a summary inside the council. If you ever wanted to do that, that should.
We want to express our thoughts, we can go ahead and.
You should be okay. I would definitely run, run check that.
Yeah, I'm sure you have.
But.
Just twice, they didn't like it.
No, it's not.
Let me make sure I understand, remind you, sorry, this, if four of us decided we want to get her together, does there have to be an application?
Yes. At the very, at the very least.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
No, stop open meeting, that was the best way to address calls from the public or people, you know, calling you and asking questions.
Like if that were called for still on under open records, that's supposed to open.
Yeah, I know, I thought it was, but, yeah. Where, where's the best place to direct or what's the best way to answer a, 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 those issues? You can, you should feel comfortable directing them to me. Uh, there's a lot of, I should be able to answer any question they have.
A lot of times they already come to you and they've been told no, and so now they're going, you're going dad.
Yeah. A lot of people do not ask me, they'll ask you guys, they'll ask their neighbor, they'll ask anybody. And they will not talk to me. There are some people that still to this day are very active and have never talked to me. Never asked me a question. So you can send them to me. Um, and sometimes what I would generally do is copy you back with them so that they know that you say, hey, or say, this, this person's reaching out and asking this question, can you reach out to them? And you can either copy me in that email or, um, I can reply back. Copy you so you have, your, uh, phone is, um, can be used in an open record request. So any text messages you send, any pictures you send, anything that you send can be used as part of an open record request.
Will be right, will be right on your, um.
Yeah. Will be right.
I want to say notes to yourself like that, I could be wrong. I feel like those are not subject to compliance, personally, they're not subject.
I don't think that's.
I.
My guess.
How long, how long can they ask for? Because I'll be honest, a lot of this I've read.
Yeah.
That's the.
So there goes those.
The, uh, we, the City of James currently really don't have a management policy, so the ball under executive session. I do not have an executive session, I think probably, I don't think there's any retention requirement or, or.
Christmas time. Because I think.
I, I, trust me, I completely.
Anything, um, you know, what you had, so. Anything um, you know, what you had, so.
I mean, I don't want to throw anything away. Um, so, let me just read all of these and see if we have any more questions afterwards, a meeting occurs when conducting business by a majority of members, which would be quorum. Um, a meeting does not include formal, informal gatherings of a majority when no business of the body is being discussed. So in that case, it's not, it's not a meeting because you're not having any business, but it doesn't mean that. Does not include meetings that are business related, such as, oh, does, sorry. So if we went on a tour of city hall and police station or the Allen Mall, that would be considered a meeting and business and we would have to have a public meeting notice. Avoid quorum outside of meetings, even by email, social media and text, so if. If I'm friends with you on Facebook, I don't get on Facebook very often, so if you're friends with me, you know that, I don't know if I'm friends with any Vegas account or my brand, but, um. And I'm not any like an official, but let's say if I were. On planning commission and I was posting stuff and you're commenting and you're commenting and you're commenting, now we have violated the open meetings act. I don't know if likes or dislikes count.
I would win up just basically.
I would say, I know that it's been noticed in the past by um staff and by the city attorney when someone posts something and there is a heart or whatever, it's noted. It's a comment, basically.
Yeah.
So, um, communication with other members, these informal meetings cannot be used to reach or negotiate agreement in avoidance of meeting requirements, so. Hey, what did you think of, what do you think about this upcoming case about um, a new library by the road trucks? Sorry.
I'm not even saying down by the river.
If the quorum exists including phone, calls, emails, et cetera, provide notice of meeting, avoid discussion, discussing meeting business or city business until it's on an agenda. Smaller, non-open informal meetings with less than a quorum are okay. Um, open meetings, notes must be publicly cast and recorded, cannot occur by phone or email and not in executive session, so. And we've never had an executive session, I can't think of it.
I, I, I don't, I don't know if there's anything on the OMA that would allow.
I don't really think.
I'm like, it's probably a legal issue.
Yeah.
Who do you think?
Yeah, but I, I don't know.
I don't know any reason why.
Anything like that would go to the commission, go to councils, I, I don't, I, I really don't know if there's anything that's actually available for the planning commission, commission to legally be able to go with the executive session.
Yeah.
Um, no deciding or taking action at an informal gathering, and that also like side talk, which I think Tru Sir someone said something about that at the city council, it's very important. Sometimes you have a question, like the clarification, what did they say, or what were they referring to, and that's fine, but to have a conversation. Or even if we go to break, uh, if we chair a call or a quick break or whatever, and then we stand around and talk about what just happened or what is about to happen. Um, that is a violation because you can't have those side conversations, you need to be making your decisions based on how you interpret the information. Beware of text messages and social media, we have a social media policy, don't text or tweet, we couldn't decide tweeting is still the right word, no limited in there. Or Facebook Live during meetings, avoid polling and negotiating, so, um, generally speaking. You're not supposed to um, be chatting about what you. Yeah, I like, I, I like that hundred, I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend approval of that or whatever. Open Meeting Act legal guidance, do not send or respond to emails, texts or other electronic messages pertaining to city business that involves more than three planning commission members, including yourself. Do not reply all to emails, to all or multiple planning commission members, then below that it says watch out for the emails from the public, because the public always.
I would tag everyone.
They always says this, they, all seven counselors, all the planning, like everybody. Um, watch out for emails from the public or new city employees or officials, and actually we have a lot of counselors who have done this in the past. Who have not learned the legal or learned the general practice that city staff follow of my car coming recipients. Don't text each other during meetings, don't text anyone else regarding the agenda items during meetings. Social media posts and comments could result in an illegal meeting under court, and then you go down below, it says do not tag other commissioners. And uh, commission members and post about city business, do not comment on posts from or involving other commission members about city business. Carefully consider whether you should post or comment on social media posts regarding city business beyond basic informational posts about events, emergencies, et cetera. Keep your city related communications on your city email, when possible, don't use your personal email. Consider limiting your texts to scheduling and information only, not substantial substantive. City related conversations, remember to strictly adhere to the agenda and issues. Germaine to planning commission business.
Well, yeah, substantive is not. I, substantive was bespoke.
We have, we have adjustments, we are on email.
You have. Um, if you, if you don't reply that in a small one, and we do recommend using it for all official cities.
No, I don't think.
It also requires you to check them.
I don't check my one and a half.
I know, I'm gonna say my, I have a personal email that I never check.
I'm remembering, you can tell me how we know, how to get to it.
I will get it all set up.
So do you have any questions on any of this?
At least I'm ninety five percent.
I don't have any, but.
One of the things that I would say um, in regards to.
We'll.
Strictly adhere to the agenda and issues, um. Sometimes it gets a little gray about is the public still on track?
Yeah.
Or is planning commission still on track? And it's often, sometimes it's a stretch, right, that it's really not about the agenda item. But they're very passionate about it, and so we entertain it, I would say um, we need to be very cautious of that, but at the same time empathetic. So I think um, Chair Scott, in the, in this situation, um, is probably the best to make a decision. So we can have follow up after the meeting if they have questions about something that's really not on the agenda. So if I're hydrant on a street that's not really relevant to the project, it's probably not an agenda item, but it's still an important conversation and it needs an answer, so.
So if they have to do a traffic or, uh, expectancy, I think that that's.
That was the end of the round that came, so it's almost.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it was really.
We can't, we can't.
Yeah, they weren't there.
Yeah.
Exactly.
They weren't a part of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we can refer to other parties at city.
Yes, so it, that's what I'm saying, like it, it, yeah, it probably is, and I think it was fine, the conversations that we had, but sometimes it's not. So people sometimes have a con- a lot of concerns of things that are very important and we need to address them as a staff and as a commission and as a council. But sometimes we'll just have to say, hey, can you, can you, can you come up here after, after the meeting is over and we'll talk about this, it's not on the agenda. So just make sure that your own conversation is still with the agenda item. One of the ones I've heard happens. Sometimes you just forget. Okay, uh, the planning commissions here across us is the central action where legal notice, public input and information all come together, public hearings should be carefully managed and should provide the following. Whoa, you have two minutes, you gotta hurry.
You're close to the end.
Okay, um, the clear purpose of a meeting, legal notice, you all bet, I think you all understand the process, does anybody not understand the process? We send out a legal notice, the, the mailing list is created by NCOG. And it has a map, has the legal information, we invite them to the party, I have tried to try and get Brandon to make it look more like an invitation, and he is very slowly accommodating me. I'm like, no, it should be like a party, and he's saying Thai place.
They always had that stuff, cause it's literally your wife.
Yes, it's still fine, it's. Um. Notice is given to the municipal clerk, which I thought was really very good for, so a perfect icon for Brandon.
I don't have a gavel.
I know, you need a gavel.
We need a gavel in a way.
I have that heavy duty.
Yes.
A hockey stick.
No, 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 I got a heavy duty old school seal for the city.
Especially someone who's got a line.
Oh, right.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Oh, Scott has a gavel.
I've used it.
Oh, yes, I'm scared of it. Um, any change, any change of the regular meeting, including the date, time or place, must be met in writing at least ten days before the date of the regular meeting.
What do you think?
Um, state statute twenty five, uh, three eleven eighty eight.
Oh, wow, uh, that's, so that's a change of, if we decide to say we want on Wednesdays and Thursdays, not a special meeting or an emergency meeting, which. Again, I don't know why there'd ever be an emergency planning commission meeting, but like every, every year. I know, but I'm worried about for emergency based on the open meeting, uh, every year, all bodies have to have their regular scheduled meeting essentially filed with the city clerk by December fifteenth. Essentially, I write the calendar and file it myself, um, but again, if you guys ever wanna have a, whatever, change your meetings to Monday night, cause Monday night forecast issues, we just know that way.
You can't do without attending for this.
And this is what's. Yes.
Our official calendar has been set, and so the only way we have, we can change it is if we give a ten day notice.
Yeah, I did want this to be viewed like a special meeting or something like that.
Right. Uh, which is later, it's good.
Yeah.
Um, talks about canceling a meeting and notice for a special meeting. Um, other issues, aware of influence from council members in the planning process, recommendations. Recommendations should be independent, councils should not be involved in the process. I'll repeat that for the company. No, it's a state statute. This is even O M L, so a lot of times, um, in every community this comes up. You all are citizens and they are citizens and council's very passionate about things and citizens are passionate and the planning commission is passionate. So sometimes planning commissioners will go to council and speak on something, and you can't do that, you, you're a citizen. But you can't say, well, this came before me, the planning commission, and I voted no, and I don't support it. Because now you're wearing your planning commission hat and you can't take your planning commission hat to city council. Not, none of you have done that since I've been here, but another community has, it has happened. And then I often have counselors say, well, I'm gonna go to that planning commission and meeting and listen, so I can see it firsthand, and I go. Okay, legally they can, it's just not, um, it's not recommended, staff isn't recommended, legal doesn't recommend it. You need to be able to make a decision without the pressure of an elected official. And without the elected official calling you and suggesting a vote or an issue to you. You need to be aware of that influence and I will tell you right now, I, I tell your counselors, I really don't, literally I say, I really don't. And I can't stop them, and they wanna come, they're like, I just said, I wasn't, okay.
So could we ever go to a council meeting and speak?
You can, but not as a planning commissioner.
Can.
So there's no time, like if you voted one way for something and then you went home and thought about it for a few days and changed your mind, you couldn't go back and say, I voted this way, but. Now I don't consider it different, just wondering, I don't, I'm just asking.
I should. Yeah.
So how does that process work though, that if we approve something, it goes to the council and they don't approve it? Is that, is that communicated back to us so that we know why or does it even matter?
I generally don't, because I normally don't think about it, but a lot of times, Scott has asked, hey, how did, how did that go, did that get passed or not? Sometimes I don't really do that.
Definitely, I was gonna look at the issue.
Oh, I'm just in the meetings, yeah.
So if we pass it, city council doesn't pass it, then if I was the owner of it, I could actually file a lawsuit against the city, is that?
District court, yeah.
Sure, I think.
What are you gentlemen?
Because you're, because your comprehensive plan said, this is what we believe this should be. And because the planning commission said, we agree with the vision that was established in the comprehensive plan, and then council says. Maybe that's all true, but we think that it's not appropriate, and they vote against it, and um. That applicant has the right and the legal standing to sue and win. I don't know ever why the comprehensive plan was not upheld in the court of law, ever. So if our comp plan says one thing and we vote against it, and they go to court, we will lose.
Goes the other way too, we use the comp plan to defend a decision.
Right, so if someone wanted to do industrial and we said, no, it needs to be single family, and we deny it based on the comprehensive plan. And I, I'm obviously gonna not, when it comes to you, I'm gonna say I do not recommend approval of this. So it wouldn't come with a recommendation of approval, but.
I just feel like sometimes nobody out in the public knows that, you know, but.
Right.
So sometimes, you know, you, you have, I don't know.
I will always try, if you, if you want, if you need me to explain something, um, you can ask and I'll do my best, and if I don't. Answer something that you're really asking, like maybe I don't understand what you're asking, um, we can keep asking, maybe worded a different way so that I can understand, because. Um, I, I am very passionate about education, I want the public to understand the process, I want the council to understand the process, and I want you all to understand the process.
Can we text you to explain it?
Here's the meeting.
That's a joke.
I'm like, um, I almost never take my phone, this is, no, I don't, no, I don't, I actually never check my phone.
May time.
So you seem very knowledgeable, have you ever thought about doing some YouTube videos, seriously?
I have, yep, that's not a bad question.
Cause I mean, it would be, you know, letting people know how stuff works, so, you know, because before this, I mean, nobody probably knew in this room what actually happened.
Yeah, and I, I do make a lot, I try to take little opportunities to educate the council. Like when I first came, I spent a lot of time educating them while I was standing there on why it should be approved and why it is before them. Why planning commission recommended approval, and why even though they thought it was gonna be this, it's gonna be something different and it's okay. How many, I can't tell you how many times people have said, well, we talked for two hours about screening. And now you're saying they don't have to do it, okay, that's an educational point, because council never made that screening conversation part of their motion. So yeah, we may stand up there and talk about it for two hours, we may have public discourse for two hours, but if it's not part of your motion, if it's not part of their motion, it's a conversation. It doesn't, it doesn't make it into, to record books, because it was not part of the motion.
So a public person should probably say, we made this part of your motion.
No, I just, it was on, I went word adjustment and Jim Beach was here, that. Our motions, he basically would write it out so saying, so that if we made a motion, we knew what we were supposed to put.
Well, and also the port of adjustment, it's a little different because there are strict state statutes on what can and cannot be heard, like it, it's very, it's a lot more black and white than it is.
They are quite traditional and it never is political, should not be, and it only goes to district courts, so.
So.
But it was nice to know that you were trying to get the right words in motion.
Yes.
I tried to write my recommendation.
I tried.
Very similar to that, so that literally you could say, I move that planning commission approves J Z blah 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 with the following conditions. I try, I tried to write it out, except I don't put, I move that.
Okay.
I don't put those three words, but the rest of it is there, teed up for you.
I do think that the public education could be more, I think if they, if they understood the process more, might not be.
I think that.
I feel like if they understood as much as you do.
Yeah, that's what I'm going, there's a lot more behind that, that you've already done, or.
There would be. Yeah.
It's kind of, seems to be kind of a hot point issue for us, it's been brought up a couple of times, alright, it's like, I've got it on my list of things as well. I think at the very least, I would like to, for us to come up with some language that is read at the beginning of every, maybe not every meeting, but every meeting where we've got twenty five, thirty, forty five public members present. Just a general overview of this is who we are, this is what we do, this is the process, um, and that needs to be really well worded. But even, even just, you know, letting them know that we are a voluntary citizen, a vol- vol- voluntary citizen committee.
And I think that they're standing in the comprehensive plan as well, it's like if it's in there.
Yeah. Comprehensive plan language.
And that's the way, you know, and that, if it matches that, there, there really isn't a whole lot of leeway that we have.
Just certain things where our hands are tied.
I mean, there is leeway, but I mean, at the end of the day, it, it turns out.
I think I can work on that.
Okay, okay, if you leave it though, then we could come back with another option, that's to be, that's to.
I'm, I'm. That's, that's about it.
Yeah, cause that, that would be good for people to understand what we, what the whole process, not something sure.
I would be willing to educate all thirty five thousand people in town, but the people that show up can at least go.
I think it's a big question, man, with, uh, with, I remember the lady and gentleman, uh, came up and wanted to know, well, how did you get this position on the planning commission?
We made an application.
I know, but I thought, um, what she was looking for.
Yeah.
Um, the name, you know, she was dead ugly, but that would be nice if there was some, um, discussion of how we got.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't know, but if you can, if you can figure it out, let me know, so I won't do it.
I went to Chamber of Commerce business lunching thing twenty seven years ago and somebody called me and said, hey.
What'd you do?
Did you be interested? And I was like, yes, that's like fun.
So yeah, you're, again, your definition of fun.
I mean, I know, it's.
My definition of fun.
It was Robert Bell and Randy U.
That's right.
Oh, it's.
Mr. Paul, why are you doing all Monday nights?
Pulling the chair.
Yeah.
You don't have a daily line, right?
Um, another thing, I, it would be talking about our kind of lack of information a lot of times in our meetings, if we can, if we can get those agenda packets out.
Yes.
I know you're busy like crazy and you don't intentionally.
Yeah, even, you can send online stuff before it's printed out.
We, we, we tried to send at least a draft, uh, at least on Fridays before, uh, this goes back to open meetings legally and again, just legal.
Send the files.
Yeah.
It's twenty four hours, we never tried to get the, cut it code back close to the wire, it was really busy.
Oh, boy, I cannot stand that, I have my mind on.
I, I, I don't take it, yeah, I don't like it.
What's your cutoff for a, a meeting such as agenda meeting?
Twenty, twenty four hours, that's the legal cutoff.
When?
My personal goal is the Friday before the Thursday.
Yeah.
So the weekend, you get it before the weekend starts, but the last couple of months I have.
Yeah. The past, the past few months have been, have been, we've been buried for the whole.
That would be enormously helpful.
But I will, and I'm not, I am making excuses, this is my excuse. That I will, and I'm not, I am making excuses, this is my excuse. I'm really black and white on code and stuff, but for the applicants, I drive everybody crazy internally. Because if they need another week or whatever, I don't make it, give it two weeks. And that causes me to get behind, so I'm not behind because I'm so, so busy, I'm behind because I let the applicants turn something in a week and a half late.
Well, in part.
Because I'm trying to work with, well, I am busy, you know, but I'm trying to work with them to help them meet a deadline.
But what is that?
Yeah, they're trying to close on the month.
And then as it, right, and then it turns out that, well, shoot, this is so much more in depth than I, this is gonna actually, literally to. For me to review a PUD and write the staff report is a minimum of six to eight hours. That's how long it takes me to review it and.
And that sense of the PUD is.
Well, we're going to two weeks after a city council meeting, right?
Yes.
So if you make it to Monday after the city council meeting, yeah, that gives you that whole week to get all paperwork done and ready before.
In theory.
If there, yes, but I mean, it's, we all work on deadlines.
Yes.
And so if the applicant knows your deadline is Monday.
Oh, I know.
They've got the weekend to fit, to get it ready for Monday.
Yeah, the, the, the problem is that.
Just don't make more work for yourself.
It makes, it makes us look unprepared, especially when the public's present.
Yeah.
And then it's not true, but it gives me a perception of an adversarial relationship between planning commission and city staff. Cause we're asking these questions almost like, well, I mean, sometimes we don't, like, what are you talking about?
I'm sure, yeah, that makes sense. I will, um, I will do everything I can to hold my deadline because that's what's.
Yeah, just take down.
Ultimately, it's me being lenient with the applicants is what's holding it up because I'm literally not getting the final draft until the week of.
And that's good customer service, but on the, on the flip side of that is you're, you're jeopardizing your quality of service for the customer service. And so just be careful not to put yourself in a laundry and make your life miserable.
Well, that's what's happening.
Quiet, give it to us in favor.
Quite the work.
No.
So that we can get it right.
If you guys don't have papers, please tell me, I will not give anything. Cause I would rather not.
I watch out of my, myself.
You do get the online, ridiculous, or uh, indefinite, I can't think.
Yeah.
I know.
Regardless, we'll give it online version, but if you don't have papers, I'll just tell them, I'll stop, I can have a patty.
My dogs don't want, well, miss the police officer.
I mean, I look at the online stuff, but I really appreciate the paper because I take it with me, I don't drive, I make notes on it, otherwise I'd have to go through it, print it all anyways.
I don't have a tablet or laptop, I've never had.
They just have it in front of me even if I'm doing.
Do you have papers?
I have five tablets.
You just gotta plug it in.
I have an A W L, yes.
Go away.
No, I do have a tablet, although I still need to see the paper to really look at that map and honestly.
I've got one more thing I like to bring up and give you all some feedback is, unlike the mayor who is a really good leader, um, I'm not. I don't consider myself a leader or have that leadership qualities, I'm okay with that, that's just who I am. But in this position, um, let me, let me explain to you real briefly kind of how I try to interact with the public. I think it's my number one goal or our number one goal that I try to facilitate is that we just listen to what they have to say when they come up. It gets a little awkward sometimes because I'm so much into the listening mode and I'm just kinda like, that's all you got, okay, next, you know? I think we, we or I might need to have a little more interaction with people, I'm not sure about that. The mayor does that, I watch his meetings and that works really well for him, but he's a better public speaker and more comfortable in doing that. I try to take some notes and and keep track of the main points before making so that when the applicant comes up for his rebuttal and we can make sure that he addressed those things. And then um, staff answering questions from the public, sometimes you jump in and say, can I, can I talk about that now? Do you prefer to do it immediately when that question comes up? Or do you wanna kind of go with, keep track of what they're asking and then address those things at the end?
I don't have a reference, sometimes it might be better if I enter it because I might forget later.
Yeah.
That happens to me a lot because we get so far away from the initial issue that I don't even remember.
Let's just keep that the way it is, if it's something you're like, no, 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 just kind of talk about that.
There's also, uh, I apologize for cutting you off.
Yeah, but.
Um, there's also the thought of, if you answer a question immediately, cause we get those people come up constantly talking about the same thing.
Right.
They come up, oh, there's a lot of traffic on this road because of X, Y, and Z, if there's a, hey, we're widening cars in the future, it should alleviate itself.
Right.
Yeah, boy.
Then no one else should come up and say, there's a lot of traffic on this road, it's been, it's been three minutes.
Right. An example, our, our previous meeting in the north end of Second Street, that property, you gotta ask for time.
Yeah.
We get, we get that, we get that.
So if, if we, if the staff does answer those questions.
Give, give me some feedback on.
So it's, it's optional.
On my participation with the public standing in front of us and asking questions.
I think with the timer and everything, it's done a great job. I'll be honest, Scott, I was, I was wondering, you know, like when you first took over, you know, cause sometimes you can, you know, you can be blunt, you know, but you've way over exceeded, I think you did an amazing job.
And you do a great job controlling.
You really have done a great job.
So people bringing them back and all, like the people kind of like, that's.
Exactly. And you're really good about saying, so how is that relevant to what we're talking about and using it?
I think that we've been, this has been a pretty good timing as well, I mean, what you're saying, when you say you can be blunt, I think it's, the timing of that is always perfect, cause you know, I've been very controlled, so.
You may not think you're leading, but you've done a good job.
Yeah, well, I'm just, from this point forward and previously, I'm very open to anybody saying, hey, as a matter of fact, um. Greg, Greg said something to me a couple of weeks ago, he's like, make sure you, make sure you're, if it's not an agenda item, you know, make sure you redirect. Feel free to just text you. Feel free to text. That's actually the last thing, the last thing on here, if we could, even though we just talked about open meeting stuff and information, if you really need to have everybody's contact information. Cause I had to ask you for yours, just like ask if you can show the text meeting.
We, we, uh, we have all that, we can give it to everyone.
Maybe just that our next meeting, she paid.
So we can plan on the Christmas parties.
I do have yours.
Three of them were, yes.
Okay, yeah.
Through.
If no one opposed to that, I think it'd be nice sometimes or something.
Let's do a corner, let's have a, let's have a, a meeting notice of the fact that we're having a Christmas party at this house. It's an event, yes.
I think it would be helpful when they, when the public does get off topic a little bit and actually start talking about the traffic or the stop sign over here, this and that, some of it is relevant. And I personally wanna know, when we're talking about bringing more people into this little area or whatever, but. We redirected them to where they can go, I think there's a few people have come up to me afterwards and been like, where do I go to get this? Like if we maybe had a, a list that you could refer to, like if it's a long drive, this is where you go to.
You can have, you can get your handout even, that, that city services, like if you had questions. So one of the things I think in the last meeting was trash and debris during construction, but we have a process for that. And we've even talked about internally going above and beyond, like maybe there's a sign posted that has call this number, if there's too much dust or whatever. Because sometimes you don't know and by the time you get out there, it's not a problem anymore. Or sometimes you do know and so you're in the process of getting it fixed, but maybe we can put together some type of thing that we can hand out or have available to the public.
Yeah, and I think being able to say, you know, it looks like we're at least receptive to it, thank you for that information, that's a really good point. Here's where you go to deal with that issue. And we can redirect that without coming across that we don't care.
Right.
Cause it comes across as we don't care, we can just shut down.
I feel like, I feel like I've come across that a little bit, like that's irrelevant right now, but it's very relevant, it's very relevant to them right now.
Yeah, and I know what you're getting at, but that's all. Yeah, I know what you're getting at, but I don't think they see it that way.
Maybe you should, yeah, maybe you should have a QR code in the back that they can scan with their phone.
And inside of that too.
Yep.
I think a nice redirection, great point, let, let me tell you where to go rather than just setting that down.
Do they put a paper agenda when they sign in?
Uh, if there's a, if we're contacting a lot of people, I've, I've tried this a few times, I don't think it worked. And we have a couple iPads and we created an online form, Microsoft form, and they enter their name, address, and what I'm going to talk on.
I was just thinking, kind of going back to the conversation, you know, if there was something back there, whether it be a E R code or even that little.
Yeah, you could put the agenda on the QR code. I don't know, I don't know how time consuming that is.
It's not, it's not.
I don't see how all those dots mean anything, really.
So basically, they were saying about, you know, they did start talking about stop signs being ran through and all. When I was on the commission before, we had a couple of large meetings where we had place here. Why are they not at every single meeting, not just only for security, but for questions coming up about, well, this road is already, you know, there's already people going a hundred miles. Be nice for the police, cause I know you probably write all that down and relay that to, to the chief, I'm sure you do that, but why is he or somebody that he assigned, why is there not somebody here that can hear it firsthand? And maybe can respond to some of these concerns that the people have, cause we can't respond to that, all we're gonna do is listen to it, and like Scott said, it makes us look like we don't care. At least if we have somebody here that cared, then I mean, we'd.
Generally, yeah, no, it makes sense and.
Why, why is it they're not in place here every single time?
A citizen asked me about that last time, it, planning commission, I've worked for three communities and they, that's just not how they're run. It's land use questions, the land use is the agenda item, these other things are not the agenda item. And the only help um, I've ever had is legal help, I've had attorneys present. In some municipalities, the attorney is always present, but sometimes they have one-on-one staff and we have one attorney in previous employment and they were always at every single planning commission meeting. So it's nice because you can always say, what do you think, is this okay? And um, I've had previously, um, the city engineer, but they were also the development services director. So they were my boss and they just came as a courtesy to me. And so they could answer questions, it gets um, people off track of the real question. Is it appropriate for houses or no houses? Because everybody wants to get off into the weeds that of drainage and hydrology and things that none of us are educated or qualified to talk about.
In that opening statement though, if you, if you had something in there about, we're not insensitive to these things. But these things, but we are supposed to stick to this. And so when we can't answer those questions or, or go down that path, we will be happy to give you information on, this is where you go. And the same from the forefront that.
And we are citizens just like you that have the same, the same need.
Yeah. These are concerns from you guys.
We may have the same concerns, but we can't address those tonight.
Right.
But at the same time, you can reach out to.
Can't answer those, we are not able to answer them.
You can, you can, like, I don't know when you got here, but like, I reached out to Jinx Folk Schools about the buses going past. I talked to Chief Jackson at the luncheon, I, well, actually it wasn't him, I mentioned it's somebody earlier about that term. And you could do that and, I mean.
That literally is, is speeding on a road is a police.
Yeah, correct. And so they would not be there because we're not there to talk about enforcing the speed on our road, we're there to talk about, is it appropriate?
So that, and so I think it would be good to include that in the beginning. But that's also that, that thing that I said, where it's still important to make that statement because it becomes part of that public record and then we can follow up. We're not gonna have a, a long conversation about it, but we're gonna take your questions and we're gonna forward them to the appropriate.
That would be great to give Scott a script as he, as he's out in the meeting, he can just say that script, cause it'd be record.
Yeah.
Sixty seconds.
Yeah. Yeah, I think I would do that like before, next March, four or five months.
Uh, I would feel about taking a short video that would just play at the beginning of every meeting.
Over and over.
That's absolutely.
Yeah, if that's easy, why don't we watch that?
That way.
Well, the planning commission meeting.
Essentially, yeah.
You gave them a whole.
I think that's a good idea, it's very personal and you don't have to.
Even though it's the.
A pre-flight.
Hey, well, I just want, I just want council to know we did.
Pre-flight.
On the QR code, why couldn't we give them the whole packet?
Oh, it's like, it's a law line.
Yeah, I, so, is when you get, have the QR code.
They're saying when they submit, they can already make that.
I don't know, I can definitely do it on their chart. I'm like, I can fully, they can do that, but yeah, that would be.
But you still have to go through ten steps.
That way they don't have to look it or come up with.
Do you even find it, have to go where it goes and find it and did?
That's why the QR codes.
We have to make it.
Then people got, yeah, the QR code, have a QR code, say how do you use the QR code.
Yeah, that could open a can of worms.
Some people.
Some people.
The more transparent you are, the more information you have in front of them in person.
Takes the heat off of everybody.
It takes away that element of them saying, well, I didn't know, I didn't know I could go there on the website and find that.
Yeah, I agree.
Even Gina, that's how they use the QR code. To you are.
Did you have anything else?
I got, I got, I got one more question.
I have one more.
And I'm so sorry to ask this, it wasn't that I wasn't paying attention, but. If I'm sitting in a meeting, obviously, you know, social media to pictures and, and those, but if, if I get a text or something from my wife or a kid. Can I pick up my phone, cause I'm always afraid to do that, I'm always like, am I allowed to do that without being judged or not, like, what's that?
And the mayor made a comment.
By the, by the, the crowd is what I'm worried about, Scott.
No, it, um, and that, that could also be something that if you see us on the phone, we, we also have families and sometimes we.
Okay, I just want, I'm, I'm always feel weird about having meetings, I don't want, you might hear it in mine, I have it, sometimes I just wanna put.
Oh, yeah, I have, last year we had babies, yeah.
I look at.
I do that too, yeah, I look up Google.
I technically think you're not supposed to.
We can't look up Google.
So anything that you look up related to the case should be part of the public record.
Okay, we'll just have random pullups.
Scott's the only one that does that.
We can't do that though, we can't pull up, if we can't understand, we can literally pull it up and go to Google Street View and look at it.
I get a more interesting, I think, from where you're made, it'd be so. I said, I am impressed with how quickly you get to stuff during a meeting.
Yeah.
I try.
It's like, you do this and bang, when a two sided.
Yeah, well, uh, in March, you're gonna get a different person, so.
That's because he learned in those other countries when he was doing his work.
I know, world traveling always.
Lose your vacations, I'll be, uh, on vacation in March.
Where are you at? Oh, okay.
We call this meeting the jerks.
We be.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying.
Oh, I told it, what, it wasn't like, did I skip?
Yeah, you just skipped it.
What?
Uh, petitions and reparatums.
I know.
I'm on it.
I didn't read it.
Okay, we did it to the record.
Very brief, it's just constitutionally allowed, see, or the state of the law, constitutional, it's a right that's given. Can't do it, there's a difference in reparatums, which is challenging ordinance and initiative, if you want the more detailed process, just let me know.
The whole process.